Think I'm.
Sometimes you get the short set.
Sometimes you do. Well, don't worry, I might feel about you. I'm at six point five, that's what I do.
That's crazy, isn't it?
I'm actually going to be one point maybe. Six point five.
Oh, I want to get this in that talk.
What's that?
The information series.
Yes. I just had the speaker have.
We're in the same group. That's great.
Right.
She's like, I just seen her.
It was so funny.
Hi, it's Nikki from the controller's office.
Hi, good morning Nikki.
Good morning.
Nikki, are you doing bed openings?
Yes, I am.
Sorry, I had Krista there.
No problem. She has a company. That's good.
Couple special guests here today.
Busy guys will play that as one of those.
Predictable, crazy.
Yes. Yep.
Hey, everyone. Asking you to please rise real quick for a pledge of allegiance. Dear gracious God, you are the God over all creation. We see your beauty in the creation of the seasons, the changing color of the leaves, the crisp autumn air, and harvesting of the crops. We celebrate the creation of the U.S. Navy. And we're celebrating their 246th birthday tomorrow. We thank you for these men and women that protect us by sea. We protect them and provide them safety. We pray for their families that their needs be met. Let's always thank them for their sacrifice for the protection of our freedoms. Lord, one lack of protection, many Americans are living is domestic violence. This plague affects one in every thirty-three Americans. Ten million Americans experience this horror every year. It affects schools, workplaces, and families. The pandemic has only exacerbated this violence. We pray for the women and men that are scared, feel trapped, and lack hope. Give them hope with clarity and confidence with a path to move forward. In your word, you state, when the righteous cry for help, the Lord hears and rescues them from all their troubles. We pray, pray for the innocent children that witness horrific reruns that they do not repeat in another generation of insanity. Guide and assist the professionals, teachers, neighbors, and friends to be on alert for the science to prevent any further victims. Let us not only think of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but strive to eliminate this form of violence permanently. Father, and other form of threats and evil hides in this world, for others evil masks itself without a face. It steals privacy, financial accounts, and identities to satisfy its own corrupt agenda. Technology has helped in so many ways, but it needs those professionals to help protect cybersecurity privately and nationally. This morning, we'll honor the National Cyber Security Month. Let us be aware and on guard against those that strive to create havoc and uncertainty. Now, Lord of peace and understanding, may you pour your love, safety, healing, and grace upon our communities. We ask you for infinite wisdom to guide our meeting. These things, we humbly pray your name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the law and the rights of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time and ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I'll figure side.
Aye.
So here, public comment on agenda items only at this time. Three, nine, one.
Our first proclamation today is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Good morning, thank you for joining us. This is a very important proclamation. Whereas domestic violence has affected members of our community and individuals throughout the world, sadly, many victims of this horrific crime suffer in silence because they are afraid to seek help. It is crucial that members of our community feel safe and comfortable when seeking help when needed. And whereas it is estimated that more than ten million people experience domestic violence every year. While domestic violence is known primarily as physical abuse, it has many other forms, including emotional, sexual, financial, or psychological. It can cause long-term trauma to individuals of every gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, culture, and socioeconomic status. And whereas since the beginning of COVID-19 pandemic, Lycoming County has seen an increase in reports of domestic violence and abuse. A contributing factor to the increase is many people are staying home. Although home is a sanctuary for most of us, it can be most dangerous place for victims of domestic violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a nationally recognized every October and first began by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence as a day of unity to connect women's advocates across the country. This month is an opportunity to help the community promote and protect the safety and freedom of all that seek refuge from this terrible crime. And whereas the Williams Port YWCA, Wise Options, is dedicated to help victims of domestic violence by providing advocacy, education, services, and resources. Through their programs, individuals and families can feel a sense of hope, safety, and protection. And whereas Lycoming County encourages members of the community to work together to increase their domestic violence awareness. Doing so will enable members of our community to feel safe and secure. Now therefore be resolved that the Commissioners of Lycoming County do hereby proclaim October 2021 Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lycoming County. We encourage residents, schools, businesses, and community groups to recognize the importance of domestic violence awareness. We appreciate the efforts of the Williams Port YWCA, Wise Options, and all other institutions and organizations that encourage domestic violence awareness throughout our community. Anyone that is aware of, we have set our hands and sealed this the twelfth day of October 2021. Lycoming County Commissioners Scott Metzger, Chairman Tony R. Massar, Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito, Secretary.
You know, the organizations that the Chairman just mentioned, you do fantastic work. And we've been to your facilities on a number of occasions and toured them. Very seldom do we have an opportunity to talk to your clients. But I'm going to add this. When there is domestic violence, especially in the home, and there are children involved, it's a long-lasting effect on those children. Even if you're raising your voice, let alone beating, you know, your spouse, this is their home. And they look at that as their sanctuary. And I want you to think before you raise your voice. I want you to think before you take action or physical abuse on your spouse. That those children will be, have a negative impact on the rest of their life. They'll bring that right to their death. And I think that's an important message to those that are involved with domestic violence. So please, do whatever you have to do to stop those actions.
Thank you. We have some individuals who'd like to come up and speak for Wise Options. Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Yep. So my name is Amber Morningstar. I am the Program Director at the YWCA here in Lycoming County. Thank you Commissioners for honoring and recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. At the YWCA, we dedicate our efforts this month to recognize and remember those who have lost their lives in our county. We also aim to provide a sense of hope and support for those who may be suffering in silence. At the YWCA Wise Options Program, we serve victims of all ages, all ability, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, circumstance, and race. Domestic violence does not discriminate. One in three women and one in four men have been a victim of some form of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. On average, there are nearly twenty people per minute physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. This average equates to more than ten million women, men each year. In Pennsylvania alone, there were one hundred and nine victims who died from domestic violence incidents this last year. Victims of domestic violence endure so much pain, so much hate, they feel as if they have no one to turn to and nowhere to go, no way out. One might ask, why don't they just leave? Why do they put up with it? These questions must shift to, why do people abuse? When victims come to the Wise Options Program, they often have little to no supports. Their abuser has single-handedly driven away every friend or family member. They often not only need a safe place to sleep, but help rebuilding every aspect of their lives. The advocates at Wise Options, with the help and support from great allies in the community, make it their goal to ensure that every victim of domestic violence knows that they are not alone. We must foster a collaborative effort to assist the journey many women, men, and children travel from victim to survivor. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the community allies that play a crucial role in combating domestic violence within our county. Over the last fiscal year, five hundred and fifty individuals from Lycoming County were screened for a protection from abuse order by Wise Options. These orders would not have been served to abusers without the dedication from the judges and the Sheriff's Department. These orders would not be upheld without cooperation from local law enforcement, probation, and the district attorney. Thank you for your tireless efforts to uphold justice and ensure individuals fleeing abuse find safety. I'd like to now ask the Wise Options staff to please stand. Last fiscal year, Wise Options served over thirteen individuals experiencing violence in Lycoming County. There are currently fourteen adults and twenty-five children residing in the Wise Options Emergency Shelter. The lethality risk individuals are facing is at an all-time high. We hear horrific stories and witness desperation within our county daily. I'd like to recognize these advocates for working in the trenches, aspiring to make a difference each and every day. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Before you go, so when did Wise Options begin in Lycoming County?
In nineteen seventy-seven.
Okay. So prior to that, there was really no place in this county for people who were victims of domestic violence to go. Is that correct, or?
That's correct. We're the only victim service provider in this county.
Right. So that's really important, I think, for the public to understand that we can't take these things for granted. You know, that was the case in many parts of the country, quite frankly. Bigger cities had people who were organizing places earlier, but that too, even if you go back, say, eighty years to nineteen fifty, people who were victims of domestic violence, as they do today, often self-medicated, right? Because they had nowhere to go. They really felt like there was no way out. And so I think it's important for us. The other thing is that, you know, as Commissioner Masser said, we all have a role to sort of play in trying to bring an end to this. And it may be as simple as, and how to do this without being a meddling neighbor, or is something that we sometimes need to think about doing, even if we are meddling neighbor. And that's if you see things going on, try to speak. You know, try to speak to them. Try to speak to the man, if it's a man perpetrating it, or if it's a woman, or try to speak to the victim. Try to find a way to create a conversation. That conversation may then allow them to find a path to getting some assistance. And we can't simply leave it up to Wise Options to save the world, although we know that you are trying very hard. And I don't say that facetiously. I say it with all respect. But whether it's our youth or whether it's families, we have to try to find a way to have that conversation and then say, hey, you know, there's, oh, there are alternatives. You know, maybe you could just tell us for a couple of minutes, what are the chief reasons that abusers tend to abuse?
Well, so domestic violence is about gaining and maintaining power and control.
Right.
So it's, any effort that that person can take to maintain that power is what happens. So whether that's isolating individuals from their family and friends, so that other people may not recognize what's going on, whether that's intimidation, you know, slamming things, yelling, raising their voice, whether that's, you know, physical abuse, it's all about power and control. So when an abuser feels as if they're losing that sense of power and control, that's when violence tends to heighten and become worse.
And some of the abusers may feel like they don't have a whole lot of power and control, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have power in their lives, they don't have control over their jobs. And the one place where they do can exercise power and control is with their spouses, with their family members.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah.
So, well, thank you for all that you do. All of you, we appreciate it. And we know that you're making an impact. You are changing lives. And that, at the end of the day, is probably one of the best things you can do. So we want to thank you.
Thank you.
This is part of society that's, an ugly part of society, that people try to hide, they try to forget. It's not one we want to talk about until something like Gabby happens nationally, where we're going to hear about her autopsy today, unfortunately. You know, where she suffered abuse through the hands of an individual who's still on her own. And that's when it seems to come to attention, and when a tragedy happens. This is a topic that we have to talk about daily. I spent over half my career next door in probation working with these individuals. I had the assault caseload, and a large part of that had to do with domestic violence. And it's true about the offender. The offender wants to have control, he wants to have dominance. And he'll do anything to make sure that he doesn't lose that. The offender feels often helpless and spirals down and feels worthless. We have to build that confidence up that their life is precious and is worth living. And we have to make sure that the cycle's broken for the generations of children to come. So it's all our responsibility to see, when you see something going on, don't put your head into sand. You know, and just make the report. You don't have to go over and get involved and stand in the middle as a referee. But make the report, whether it's a child, or a woman, or a man, make that report. You owe it to everybody to make sure that this doesn't continue. So thank you for everything you do. It was a pleasure working for it with you in your agency for years. You do amazing things, amazing things. And I've been, I've had those victims cry in my office, you know. And they do, they feel like hopeless. And your agency gives them that hope. So thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to the vigil on Thursday.
Yeah, the vigil will be this Thursday at the Community Theater League at 5:30. So we encourage you to come out. It is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. I'd like you to get a picture with everybody. Pick them up, please. I also want to thank the District Attorney's Office and the courts and Judge McCoy, who oversees domestic violence and APL, because the sheriff's office, they all play intricate part of making sure that this violence stops. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for National Cyber Security Month. And Commissioner Masser is going to read that.
Do your part, be cyber smart. Cyber security starts with you and is everyone's responsibility. Whereas the Lycoming County Commissioners recognize that it is vital a role in identifying and protecting citizens from and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact on our individual and collective security and privacy. Whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportations, utility, healthcare, emergency response systems. Whereas the Stop, Think, and Connect campaign serves as the national cybersecurity public awareness campaign implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofits, and governmental organizations, as well as academic institutions working together to increase the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the American public to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework has been developed as a free resource to help organizations, large and small, both public and private, improve their cybersecurity practices through a practical approach to addressing evolving threats and challenges. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, an awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the County of Lycoming, Pennsylvania's information infrastructure and economy. And whereas the federal government of the United States of America, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing Analysis Center, the National Association of State Chief Information Officers, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance, all recognize October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And all citizens are encouraged to visit these websites along with Lycoming County Information Services Department and the Stop, Think, and Connect campaign website to learn about cybersecurity, to put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplace, and businesses. Now therefore, we, the Lycoming County Commissioners of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim that the County of Lycoming is officially supporting National Cybersecurity Awareness Month for October 2021. Lycoming County Commissioner Scott Metzger, Chairman Tony Masser, Vice Chair, and Rick Maravito, Secretary.
Jerry, you like some, please?
Hey Commissioners, Jerry Kennedy, Director of Information Services for Lycoming County. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for your support. We have, over the years, been able to dedicate resources and do what we can with the funds that we have available to protect us. And we also participate a couple of organizations locally to help share the wealth of information that we have access to. And hopefully that is making an impact.
Jerry, this is relatively new, isn't it? I mean, within the last five or 10 years?
The actual Cybersecurity Month? Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah. So it's become a real problem, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Maybe you can just tell some of the public out there what they should be aware of, what they should look for when they're on the web shopping, or doing whatever, or even reading emails. What kind of advice would you give them, which you often give to us, and we often sometimes make a mistake and we get caught? What is it that we do?
To quote a famous Commissioner, let's return to paper. The online world is certainly very hard to get away from. When you visit a shopping website, there's things to look for on the website to say it's secure. There's usually a little padlock in the URL to say that the website is secure. Try not to, you know, visit and use sites that are not well-known. Granted, you can find some great deals out there from, you know, the far corners of the web, but you never know where this stuff is coming from. There is a vast list of things that you can look for that probably can't be contained in a single day in a single conversation. When you get email, you know, look, make sure it's from who you are expecting it's from. Check out the address. Make sure it's the real address that you're expecting it to be from. If you're not expecting an email, it's not something you do business with, delete it. It's junk. It's just like the junk mail that comes from the postal service. Send it to the shredder. There are things out there that just arriving in your inbox will essentially compromise your computer and everything on it and everything that you do. So returning to paper has its merits. But I don't think that we're going to go that way anytime soon. There are lots of resources, just the motto is think before you click. Take a second, take a breath. A lot of the cybersecurity hacks that are out there today, or the thing now is phishing attempts. Everybody's getting a new unpaid invoice via your email. And it's probably not a legit thing that you want to get into. But with all of the stuff that's out there, you know, protect your kids from social media. I know myself, I'm going through, I have a couple teenage daughters, and we've got some things going on in the social media world myself. If I could roll back time and put them into the Stone Age, I would. So they'd go outside and ride their bikes a while. But that was not, it's not in the cards. The schools are handing out. But that was not, it's not in the cards. The schools are handing out Chromebooks, and everybody's bringing home iPads, and all of that information is front and center. We're not going to stop it. We just have to try to manage it and shape the next generation to know that there's, you know, clouds outside.
Jerry, our seniors are targets often on the phones for scams. As they try to learn technology and make sure that they can get things done on the computer, what recommendations do you have for seniors, because they're often targeted too?
Seniors are certainly targeted. They've been targeted for a very long time. It's unfortunate. You know, maybe if we go back to the Wild West days, we can stop some of that stuff. But I guess my best advice is to have someone that is a trusted person in your circle. If you're a senior, whether that be a family member, a friend, a neighbor, have someone that you trust that can look over your shoulder or you can run things by, because there's all kinds of stuff out there. I know that in my circles, there have been people that have fallen for the email that, you know, your computer's infected, please call us now. It's like, no. I get calls all the time from very close relatives that they get an email and it pops up on their screen, and we're all in panic mode, and it's like, no, just cut the X and move on. But have someone that is familiar with, you know, your needs and what you need to do so that you have someone who can, you can trust and speak to. And you don't have to react when that email comes in and says, you know, the world is falling. You don't have to react at right that moment. It will be okay. Just shut down the computer and have somebody else look at it.
Thank you. The time and date moved me as to your presentation to the Commissioners. But what remained vivid in my mind was the TV screen with the cyber attacks as, you know, the world mapped and where they're coming from, where they come out of, and who's receiving them. And I remember you pleading with us, and I think it was my first term, but it may have been right when you came into office, Commissioner. I'm not sure. Big screen of all the attacks. And, you know, you brought awareness to us, and we probably gave you a little bit of money, not a tremendous amount. But lo and behold, you know, one month after a county was attacked. And then we had our own, I won't bring out the name, but we had, not from Lycoming, in Lycoming County here, an organization that was attacked, and it cost millions and millions of dollars. So it is no joke. These people were out here to not only infiltrate information, but to destroy our systems, which cost us millions of dollars to place. So you got me. I think it was the first time you got me. But you have to understand, we were having discussions about this, and I think you directed that fish to me.
I wish I could plan it that well.
Yeah, okay. All right. So thanks. Another thing I want to bring up is, Jerry, are you at a full complement of employees?
We are not.
I mean, how many are you down?
We're down three.
We're down three, but what's more important is that this is a specialized field. And we are discussing how do we retain people, how do we recruit people? And we are obviously well below, you know, the wages. And we've had a few people, and it's not just your department, but since we're here in front of us, we have some major concerns, and cybersecurity is one, and just maintaining the entire system is another. So don't think it's on deaf ears. You know, we will attack the needs of Lycoming County. It's just going to take a little bit of time, so if you need anything, anything else comes up, please call us.
Yeah, but thank you for what you do and your staff. They're dedicated, and it is very hard to compete with the private sector.
And Daxton, if you're out there watching, thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Daxton, you made them look good last night.
Yeah, you did.
Thanks for trying to... Jerry, thanks for what you do for the cybersecurity, because you're constantly reminding us that we can't just click, right? We've got to think, think, click, and connect.
Jerry, we have the proclamation. We'd like to get a picture with you.
Okay, so we're starting back up with our informational series, County Departments and What They Do For You. This week, we have Dave Goodwin from JPO.
Commissioners, good to see you again.
Dave, thanks for being here, and it was a pleasure to be with you and your staff last week because we saw where you've been on Justice Week next door.
Yeah, we really appreciate having you there. It was great, and having you guys there may be even more special, I think. I know the staff really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great to see you. All right. So I'll try to make this a little exciting here. My name's Dave Goodwin. I'm Chief of the Juvenile Probation Department. So I'll just go through, you know, what we do up here. So the juvenile probation department is comprised of three clerical staff, 11 officers, a deputy chief, and myself. The department is trained in the latest evidence-based practices, defensive tactics, and firearms training. This training prepares an officer to provide effective supervision to the youth they supervise. The juvenile probation department is responsible for the supervision of youth that have been arrested from 10 years old to 18 years old less one day. Youth that have been placed on supervision may be on until their 21st birthday. As stated in our department mission statement, the officers of the department incorporate three distinct principles in fulfilling court order disposition. These principles include community protection, accountability of victim restoration, and building youth's competencies. These balanced and restorative justice principles are designed to enable youth in the community to be more improved leaving this system than when they entered. Overall, the goal of the department is to reduce crime countywide and lower recidivism rates among caseloads. When initially put on supervision, the juvenile probation officer will always develop a case plan for the youth. This is the blueprint for the juvenile while under the court supervision and a tool for engaging the youth in behavior change. Our case plan outlines monitoring and reporting requirements, court directives, specific programming and interventions, victim-related responsibilities, community service obligations, and educational development plans. When managing a youth on supervision, we always incorporate evidence-based practices, which means we apply what we know in terms of research to what we do with our youth, their families, and the community where we live. The juvenile probation department uses cognitive behavioral interventions and utilizes a multitude of providers to broker the best services to the youth being supervised. In order to provide a great, excuse me, in order to provide a great service, you need to have a great staff. This department is made up of talented and professionals, talented and passionate professionals. The experience is vast, with seven officers having over 20 years' experience. We have officers that have obtained master's level education. We have officers who devote their personal time to their churches, coaching and mentoring youth, and community service. The juvenile probation department has three men that have proudly served in the armed forces. Two of those men made great sacrifices, left normal lives behind, and fought for our freedoms in a distant war zone. This department is not only built on experience and character, but on dedication. The dedication I see every day with the youth that they supervise, the commitment and insincerity to their work is genuine and heartfelt. This dedication does not stop with the youth, though. The staff are there for one another on a day-to-day basis, not only like a team, but like a family. The title of this segment is County Departments and What They Do For You. I can proudly report that this department provides a top-of-the-line service from a highly-trained, educated staff. This service is provided for and funded by the generous taxpayers of Lycoming County, and we appreciate that. I would further note the support of the Commissioners, which has been longstanding and deeply appreciated. Without your support, this department would not be what it is today. In closing, Lycoming County juvenile probation officers dedicate so much to change the lives of the youth and their families in this community. This office works diligently to keep this county safe and continues to reduce recidivism rates. If we can reduce recidivism, excuse me, if we can reduce recidivism rates, we know our successes are increasing. When our successes are increasing, young lives are changing, and the community is benefiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Your department does change lives.
Thank you.
It's a fact. We have incredible staff. I've worked with many of them through the years. The juvenile probation has had a solid foundation through generations. I want to express our condolences to the Jones family. Harry Jones recently passed. He was head of probation over there. When I came aboard back in the 80s, he spent 30 years with the county. He was now a standing gentleman, did tremendous work with youth. And Jim Reed had worked with him. Then Eddie Robbins came and happened to him. He spent 30 years here. I hope you spent 30 years with us, too. But your staff, you've nailed on the head. They've been here for 20-plus years. They're dedicated to communities, they're coaching, MRM services, and they're outstanding individuals. They're better people, and they're definitely making differences in youth lives, and that's what it's about. So thank you for your service and your department's service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And you came from where?
Clinton County.
Clinton County. And so we had Ed Robbins running the department, and it's very difficult to replace someone like Ed with all that time, but the staff is phenomenal. And when you talk about seven people there for over 20 years, I run a business, I run a couple businesses, and I have some of that longevity in my business. You can't replace them.
No, you can't, and I'm dreading the day when some of them do.
Right. And, but you stepped in, how long ago now, over?
About a year and a few months.
A year and two months. You're doing an incredible job, and you're just picking up where Ed left off, and I really appreciate your service.
I appreciate that.
Tell Dave rest of the guys thanks as well.
I will. Thank you very much.
Dave, give the public a perspective on how many youth the department interacts with a year or days.
I think we have about 165 active cases right now. That's down. COVID has affected that. We've, our numbers are now starting to go up quickly. We anticipate probably over into the 200s, higher 200s. That's an active.
Caseload.
Everybody that's on right now, so.
And just give the public a quick perspective on what a typical agent does in a typical day.
It's so different because of all the different youth that we're dealing with. But a lot of our officers are assigned to different schools. So they typically come in the office, they'll see who's in school, if there was any problems overnight, and they go out and address those issues. They meet with them in the schools. If they can't meet the women in the schools, they meet with their families outside of school. We're on the go. We are not an office-based office. We are a proactive, field-based office, which has proven to be effective. And, you know, that's what we do. As conflicts come up, we change direction and deal with them. And to talk about experience, it's wonderful having such experience in a department where they know how to address each conflict so uniquely and correctly, and really know how to address the kids' needs. Nothing that you could do unless you had the experience, so.
Do you work with the program that Judge McCoy and Judge Lekka had on the truancy?
I sit on the, I go to truancy court.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll echo my colleagues. You really hit the ground running, and we appreciate that because it was a difficult situation when someone's been there so long.
Sure.
But, and hats off to Judge McCoy for identifying and working with you, I think, from the beginning, right? I mean, I think she, yes, she really saw you when you applied and the potential, so thanks. And pass that on to the women and the men there, that we appreciate what they do.
I will. And, you know, I said in the speech about the support from you guys. I can't say it again, honestly. I think I have a good working relationship with you guys, although I'm sure there will be differences, but I enjoy coming to the table, discussing everything. And I've just really enjoyed that part of the job, and I appreciate that, again.
One more question. Do you see, you know, we celebrated domestic violence on here, for awareness. And when your children are called children, that if people supervise, do you, are they products of domestic violence? Do you keep track of that, or?
I think the majority of the kids that we deal with have some kind of trauma in their life, whether or not that was directly from domestic violence, maybe witnessing domestic violence, or some kind of traumatic event that happened to them. I absolutely believe that a lot of our caseload would have been affected by domestic violence in some way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you.
Nikki Batshaw is on the line for bid openings 2.0.
Morning, Nikki.
Good morning. We received three bids for the printing of absentee ballots and mail-in ballots. The first one was from Phoenix Graphics, and that was $1.61 a piece. The next bid was from NPC Incorporated. That was $1.64 each. And then our last bid was from David A. Smith Incorporated at $1.79 each.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, this is, this is a good example of what we discussed last night at a meeting with Act 77, the additional cost to the counties because of this act. So right there, depending on what it is, we, I think we sent out over 15,000 mail-in ballots. So you look at that at $1.79, it doesn't seem like, you know, well, it seems like a lot to me. Okay, but when you look at it from a voting perspective, eh, maybe not so much. But every one of those have to be verified. So the voter registration office, which, how many people do you have working over there?
Four full-time.
Four full-time. And this is just one really small aspect of the voter registration office, have to deal with. So, you know, when we were talking about the overall cost, we were wondering how much it does cost for the Act 77, which is the new voter registration laws and mail-in ballots, absentee ballots, and the like. And we're trying to put some numbers together, and I have to think it's well, well over $300,000. Now, and that's not including the equipment that must have been purchased. So this law has to be, I'm not going to say repealed. I doubt very much if it'll be repealed, but it has to be reformed, and it should take place this year. We have to get our legislators to look at the five major problems with the law, listen to our professionals that work in the county's office, and get it done. And I don't, and I don't, I think this is a bipartisan issue as well. We can, we can get this done and make it more secure and less expensive.
Or is there anything you like that?
Just that it has indeed been a lot of costs. Some of them are perpetual because it's staffing. You know, more overtime, more people. It puts more... It puts more stress on county operations across the board because even if I'm not hiring more staff, I've got people coming in from other departments who I need to help carry that load during the last few weeks before an election. I've got people over there helping to test voting equipment today. We just got 300, 400 ballots in the mail. We just got 300 or 400 ballots in the mail from a three-day holiday weekend, and that's going to take a couple people, probably most of the day, to get those marked and received in the voter registration system, sorted so that when we start that pre-camvassing on Election Day, that we're ready to go. And that's going to be every day, hundreds more coming in. They all have to be, that process has to repeat every day.
How many were mailed out this year?
For this election, we mailed out about 3,800, a lot less than the 15,000 we sent out in November of 2020. But I think the important perspective is to look back at pre-Act 77. In November 2016, the previous presidential, we had 2,500 absentee ballots. So, even in the slowest election year of the four-year election cycle, we're doing more ballots by mail now than we used to do in presidential elections before Act 77. That's the gravity of the change. And it's running an entire separate election on top of your in-person operation, and it has costs associated with it. An entire new account had to be created and funded for print mail services, and then you have the overtime costs and have equipment we had to buy, like an envelope opener. And it's not necessarily the end. You know, we don't know where the legislature is going to go from here, and the government is, are going to go from here.
And the requests for mail-in ballots, I mean, they're both Republicans, Democrats, independents, they're all requesting it.
Yes. Yeah. It's across the board. You know, the numbers are way up regardless of party affiliation. You know, it's a five-fold increase, it's a, you know, three-fold increase. You know, the numbers are off the charts, and that's even before, you know, the number we've mailed out so far doesn't take into account what we're receiving on a day-by-day basis. It doesn't take into account people who are going to be coming into the office wanting to get a mail ballot over the counter. We won't have like what we had in November last year, where I had 50 people lined up down the hallway almost every day for two to three weeks before that election. But we'll have a lot of people coming in, in person, especially given what they're seeing in the news about, you know, more issues with the mail. We have, we hear anecdotally about entire carrier routes in this county and in other counties that are not being delivered for days at a time because of staffing shortages for postal carriers. There's just a story out of Luzerne County, I'm sorry, Lackawanna County, about a town that didn't get mailed for seven days. And you think about what that does to election mail delivery, and that it could happen both incoming and outgoing. So, it takes them seven days to get a ballot, and what if the day they put that in the mailbox, it's, you know, another seven days before it gets picked up.
What do you think the impact of the overseas ballots will be? Service people with the planes right now are being grounded, they're not being flown as often, major prices going on in the country right now.
Yeah.
Cancellations. Will those ballots appear in time?
It is, for overseas and military voters, it is mitigated at least somewhat by the fact that we are permitted to, if they request it, we are permitted to email them their balloting materials instead of send it by regular mail. So, you're cutting out one leg of that trip. However, that ballot still has to be mailed back, the voted ballot. They cannot submit that to us electronically. So, they are going to have to, at a minimum, one trip through the, you know, the overseas mail or the military mail. And they have until seven days after the election, but they still, you know, they still need to get on it, just like everybody else, to make sure.
And do it now because?
Yeah. What we've seen anecdotally since Act 77, since I got in the business, unfortunately, of having to understand the ebb and flow of the post office and how all that works, is that at the beginning of October, when we start mailing ballots out, the mail is running pretty well, but as you get further into the month, the channels kind of get saturated with election mail, those delivery timeframes slow down. Suddenly, instead of three days, it goes to four, six, seven. By the time you get very close to the election, people are getting ballots in seven or eight days, and that's exactly when you don't want it to be taking. We have more time at the beginning than we do at the end, and unfortunately, the progression of mail delivery delays goes the opposite direction.
Commissioners, I think to just add one clarification. I know that we use bid and proposals synonymously, but this is an RFP for these services. So, I don't want anybody to think that just because there's a low price, that that is the probable, you know, over.
Yeah, there's a whole section in the document that I created that has other specifications and qualifications that they have to meet. So, I talked with Matt and said, you know, that will be a priority today for me to go through all that, and hopefully I'll discuss with Forrest, and hopefully I'll have a recommendation next week for you.
And I think that's a very good point you made, Director, is that, you know, it was new, and we were choosing who were going to have print up our ballots. And thank God, we chose the organization that we did, because some of the others, they messed it up, and counties, counties were, you know, sacrificed, and their votes weren't counted. There were a number of issues because these companies didn't do the right things. And so, we have to have faith in the companies that put the bid out or submitted, but we also have to take into consideration, you know, how well do they do their jobs? This is too important to mess it up.
This is, it's really a critical service that we're discussing here, and you're right. Every election cycle we've had since Act 77, there had been stories in the media about this county having an issue or that county having an issue, and it's because, you know, in the past, you used to hand prepare all of these ballots that you would mail out because there weren't that many of them. And if you made a mistake, if you had the wrong address on a label, or somebody got the wrong party ballot in a primary, it was a human error that was committed with one ballot. But because we now are sending mail ballots to huge numbers of people where it entails now, you have to get into automated processes, batch-based processes now. If an error is made by, say, a print mail company, it's not one error for one voter, it's an error that could be multiplied dozens or thousands of times. And so, the errors are bigger, and they, you know, invariably get reported on. So, it's definitely a fair point, and, you know, and counties are also receiving into that because if a county looks at it as a bid, if they have to look at it as a bid in some circumstances, you could, you could end up with a company that, you know, you don't necessarily know everything about them going, you know, or maybe you're not happy with it, and then the counties have to deal with that. I've talked to Department of State and asked why we're not looking at getting some of these companies on Co-Stars. Right now, none of them are on Co-Stars that I'm aware of, but if they were, it would give counties a little more freedom to review the choices and make a choice that's the best fit for them.
Unfortunately, it's the same thing they did when they implemented the equipment. It was the same thing. They did it, they didn't have any of them on state contract, and then you had an hour, two hours to make a decision on where you were buying.
Yeah.
And now, it's the same deal.
And when we had to get the paper-based equipment in an 18 and 19, there were long delays getting them on Co-Stars. So, like you had, you had done your research, you kind of knew what you wanted to do, and then you're waiting for the state to get its part done so that you could, you could pick what you wanted instead of having to go through a bid process.
And for clarification for the public, this is obviously not for this election or election.
That's right.
Which election is this for, the print materials?
Yeah, so we have, we still have a vendor in place for the November election. Those ballots have already gone out. This would be for elections going forward. It would be for a contract to start next year and run for four years through the end of 2025.
Be for the May primary, four years on.
Yeah. I mean, Tony's point was accurate. Counties were really scrambling last year after Act 77, coming to grips with what this likely meant in terms of voter behavior, and that was even before COVID-19 hit. And so, a lot of counties, we realized this was going to be necessary really late in the process, had to get into contracts very quickly. And now that, you know, 2020 is sort of receding at least, we're not in the thick of that, that kind of crisis management mentality we were going through all of last year. Now, counties have had a little more time to breathe and try to plan, looking further ahead, you know, so that we're not just reacting to the moment.
Okay. Moving on to 3.0, Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report with Brandy Clements.
Morning, Brandy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the Accounts Payable Cash Requirements Report for invoices due through October 20th, 2021, to be paid on October 13th, 2021, in the amount of $2,496,984.43.
Okay. Thank you. Majority of these are grants and other services for other sources, 52%. Just under 8% is coming out of the general fund, and 37%, 38% is through RMS. Is there any questions?
That's almost a million dollars out of the revenues from all of them, so that's always good news. And 1.3 in grants. What was the majority of those grants, Brandy?
A million dollars was the Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Oh, that we passed on to staff.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to accept the Accounts Payable.
A second motion.
All fair side.
Aye.
So, Carrie, Brandy.
4.0 Personnel Actions with Roxanne Greenfield.
Morning, Roxanne.
Good morning, Commissioners. In adult probation, we have Taryn K. Beerly as a full-time replacement promotion as a clerk for pay grade five, $15.50 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. Also in adult probation, Angelina Missigman as a full-time replacement clerk three, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour, effective October 18th, 2021. In the courts at MDJ Leffley's office, Sophia Lauer is a full-time replacement clerk three, pay grade four, $14.09 an hour, effective October 18th, 2021. At RMS Sub Court, Brian R. Hillis is a full-time replacement promotion mechanic, pay grade six, $18.31 an hour, effective October 31st, 2021. In planning and community development, Heather L. George is a full-time replacement promotion as a zoning officer, pay grade six, $33,596.69 annually, effective October 17th, 2021. At pre-release, Lane M. Gibson, part-time replacement, pre-release driver, pay grade three, $12.03 an hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually, effective October 18th, 2021. Also at pre-release, Jill S. Kinley as a full-time replacement resident supervisor, pay grade five, $15.37 an hour, effective November 1st, 2021.
Okay, can I stop you there? And?
Can I, can I do maybe just 4.22? That's not part of the DPS.
Yes, that's what I wanted to do there.
Okay. In the District Attorney's Office, full-time assistant county detective, pay grade AD, $23.66725 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021.
What pay grade AD? What does the AD stand for?
It's a contract.
Oh, that's your designation. I've never seen, okay, yeah, we don't usually. I'll tell you what, in all the years I've been here, I don't think I've seen in one meeting as many, and they're all replacements.
They're all replacements.
They're all replacements, and it just shows, you know, I heard on the news that 40% of Americans had decided they were going to switch jobs after this pandemic. I guess it made a lot of people, I don't know, maybe I got that, maybe I got that number wrong, but a whole lot of people. And I think this shows, we have a whole lot of new hires, which is good. We certainly needed them.
There is a national labor shortage. It's county-wise, national. It's going across the nation. We talked about it last week. We were at a, all three of us were at a meeting with the Department of Labor there from Pennsylvania Department of Labor, and one of the unfortunate stats that shared with us is that the kids currently in third grade, by the time they graduate, which is nine years from now, will then be able to catch up with the job market once out there for jobs that are available. So, we're talking about a decade before we fill all the jobs that are currently there with the youth that we have. A lot of people will retire, and baby boomers had five to six kids. Today, kids, families have 1.7 kids, you know, roughly one or two kids. So, there's just not as many children there to replace the jobs. It's a crisis, and we try to tackle it locally here. Wages are a factor, and people are jumping from job to job, and you see it every day. Their interviewing process, and to get people in to show up for interviews is challenging. They'll call for an interview, and then they don't show up. So, there's many factors involved in this monster that we're trying to tackle. But these are all replacement jobs. We're thankful these people are coming to work for the county. We wish them long longevity and success. Yeah.
Do you want to vote on these separately?
Yeah, separate, then we'll go to DPS.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions read by the Director.
A second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So, Carrie, thank you.
I'll read these individually.
4.8 on.
The following are a result of the reorganization at the Department of Public Safety and their Communications Department, and the re-titling of the positions. And we'll start with 4.8. In Public Safety Communications, Chelsea L. Ridgway is a full-time, this is a title and job code change only. She is a telecommunicator trainee at a pay grade six, $16.76 an hour, and that's effective Also in Communications, Ariana N. Warner-Giris. This is a title and job code change. She is a telecommunicator trainee, pay grade six, $16.76 an hour, effective 10/17/21. In Communications, Katie J. Gesano. This is a title, job code, and rate change. She is a telecommunicator, one-call taker, pay grade six, $17.60 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Clinton W. Frackman. This is a title and job code change, telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $18.534712 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Alexander M. Hafner. Title and job code change to a telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $18.534712 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Breton J. Flecker. A title and job code change to telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $18.534712 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Cygeisha Brown. Title and job code change to telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $19.00086 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Timothy W. Bausch. Title and job code change to telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $20.4595 an hour, effective October 17th, 20, the rate is $20.45951 an hour. That's effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Mark T. Miller. Title and job code change to telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $21.920095 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Samantha L. Gordner. Title and job code change to telecommunicator two, pay grade seven, $19.673519 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Stephanie M. Andrus. Title and job code change to telecommunicator three, pay grade eight, $24.083727 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. Also in Communications, Ashley L. Dietrich. Title and job code change to telecommunicator three, pay grade eight, $22.29 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. In Communications, Jacob E. Winter. Title and job code change to telecommunicator three, pay grade eight. pay grade eight, 22.829172 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021. And finally, in Communications, Dustin Williams. It's a title and job code change. He's a CAD training coordinator/telecomunicator two, pay grade nine, 24.52 an hour, effective October 17th, 2021.
Okay, any questions, Office?
So what this reflects is the program that we implemented to assist with the retention and the hiring of new people at 911 to address the problem. And all of these title changes show the career ladder that now exists there to become a trainee, telecommunicator one, two, three, which is very good, and a coordinator. So thank you for all your efforts on that and the work that you guys have done.
The changes in titles with the tier system where they comply.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you remove Jim?
I'll move to approve the items 4.8 through 4.21 under the personnel actions.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Roxanne.
Maya Too has an informational item to share. Good morning, Commissioners.
This is just to announce that we're requesting bids for the Coroner Truck Module. This is going to be a rapid response unit insert for his new vehicle that's expected to be delivered in 2022.
Thank you.
And moving on to action items, Maya has the first two, so I'll just let you.
Yep. The first item I have is to approve Emergency Resolution 2021-13. It's to the Armstrong Tower, Communication Tower. What had happened back on July 15th, there was a storm that caused some damage to the fiber optic network cabling. As a result of that damage, we have to do some replacement of that cabling, and as a result, there's a cost associated with that, which is listed.
Was this the tower? It hit the lightning tree twice.
Yes, unfortunately. It's the famous one, yeah.
You don't want to go up there during the lightning storm, that's for sure.
I think last year, the year before that, we had two claims against that tower. It's almost like a yearly occurrence, unfortunately.
I think we should pull a dummy tower up and hire. Crazy. So take out a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry.
And then the last item I have for you is to acknowledge the list of contracts that were approved by the Director of Administration for the month of September, and there were 14.
Any comments on those contracts?
Majority of them are renewals.
Motion is up.
Down, move.
Fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
6.3 Shannon Rossum, to vote on Timber Run Industrial Park.
Morning, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is an agreement. It's basically a formality with UGI. They're requiring us to sign an agreement, and then in turn, Digger will also be signing an agreement for the run of the natural gas line out to the Digger site. So it's just confirming that we'll be paying them. I think the total amount was $551,000, but that does not include also our cost of the opening and closing of the line. The total cost of the project is about $870,000, of which we have about $287,000 in a state grant. So as soon as this is done, then they should be able to start work very quickly. And they'll get us suspects for our portion that we'll have to bid out for the opening and closing.
Yeah.
Well, so the public understands, if we want to bring employers and businesses here, we have to have certain infrastructure for them, right?
Yes.
I mean, if someone is building a factory, they don't want to spend $800,000 to bring natural gas. So it's not unusual. In fact, it's the norm that those infrastructure improvements be there.
Water sewer access and natural gas are key components for the users at the industrial park. And the natural gas, while it's close, is not directly adjacent. But this will also get us in the future additional. There will need to be some other improvements made along the natural gas line that supplies this area, but there will be additional capacity in the line that we're putting into the industrial park.
And through those grants, we can recruit some of that.
Yes. Yes. Just like the water, you know, we're hopefully getting money for the water grant. We believe for $500,000, this, we're getting about $280,000, and we're still looking for some additional grant possibilities for the access, which should be, we should be going out for a bid for that very, very soon.
So it helps reduce the cost.
Every 10 years, we have to develop a comprehensive plan. And it takes about, well, last time, I believe, it was almost four years to get it done because we basically did it by ourselves for the most part. And many decisions have to be made when we're doing this. What growth areas are we looking to expand into? And to touch base with Commissioner Maribito's last comment is that the county, we feel we're responsible for some of the economic development that happens regardless of what community it's in. And the Montgomery area was the
Major area.
Major area. And so I think it's very expensive when we see what we put into the development of that parcel that we own. But we are looking five, 10 years down the road, the jobs that it will create, the additional housing that will be placed there. And we're not talking, man, this is just part of the $800,000, some thousand dollars. We're probably looking at about maybe $3, $4 million just in this one parcel.
Yeah.
But what rewards do we get? We have a potential of, what, 400, 500 jobs?
575 to 850 between the two
Two, right.
Two businesses.
And we're also planning on developing the front part of the golf course. So that will bring in revenue. I think it's a great idea. I think what we've done is responsible. You know, only the future will tell us. But we believe, we feel very confident that those decisions that we're making currently will provide dividends down the line, just as it did from Montour, yeah, Montoursville to Muncie, that corridor.
Right. And both of those corridors are part of the central Susskind Valley thruway system. So not only will there be traffic changes, we'll have additional capacity along the 180 corridor for potential future growth and development. And because of doing this on the 15 corridor, we'll also have additional capacity in this area and north on 15 in that area. Because once we put this infrastructure into Timber Run Industrial Park and then move forward to move the infrastructure up the north, north of the landfill and the industrial park, there are other industrial lands in there that there's a potential possibility to see additional commercial or industrial growth on both corridors. And so there's, you know, if the mall were to get redone, if, you know, there's many opportunities in the county where we could sustain some very good industrial, commercial growth.
Thank you.
Shannon, do you have time to stay until Commissioners come in?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Take out a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
6.4 Jerry Kennedy, vote on prison security's camera systems.
Good morning, Commissioners. What you have before you is a request to Gaia Communications, one on GSA and one on contract for the prison security systems, video security systems. We spread those across two contracts to obtain the best pricing. The total of the project in this phase is $10,740. It is a capital budget item for the prison this year.
Any questions? Carry on, take out a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you.
6.5, um
I'm going to do it.
Okay, Kate Goodwin.
Yep.
For voting on agreement with Jefferson City.
Dave Dees does a great job with this all the time.
It's great.
They're part of the great negotiator.
She is an excellent negotiator.
She gets prices down. We want to thank her for her services and saving taxpayers' money.
Absolutely. I didn't know that you said that. The Juvenile Probation Department is seeking the approval of Jefferson County Detention Center. It is located in Ohio. Just really quickly, the Juvenile Probation Department and juvenile probation departments around the state are going through a detention crisis due to staff shortages that have been discussed, among some other things related to COVID restrictions, but mostly staff shortages. So we have seven detention facilities currently contracted, and it's not uncommon for us to not be able to put a youth that needs to be temporarily detained till they go to further service. So this came recommended from the Juvenile Court Judges Commission. Other counties in the state are utilizing them. So we hope that with your approval, we can utilize that. Only what we absolutely need to, because it is four hours away. So that's a long round trip for two officers to go.
It's a backup financially.
It is for like, if we're absolutely stuck and can't do anything else, and somebody really needs to go.
What do you have to do, these prices in place?
Aggravated assault, you know, cases, then, you know, when there's a victim involved, you know, sometimes we're forced to detain a kid, and we want to have an option for at least.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you.
6.66, Kristen McLaughlin is on the line. Kristen?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Kristen.
Um, 6.6 is the, there is a budget. This would be, I'm sorry, a subrecipient agreement with the West Branch Regional Authority for the amount of $659.77. What we are doing is reallocating the funding from the Walton Generator Project, which is done and was done under budget, to this particular project, which will allow us to award, these are grants to homeowners to fix their sewer laterals that are non-compliant. And this will allow us to award the final contract on that, that project and close it out, the West Branch Regional Authority current project in Montgomery.
Okay, any questions on that? Carry on, take out a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Fair side. Aye. Aye. Jenny, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay, it's okay. I'm going to have, we're going to jump ahead to 6.8 like Chris to do her other action items so that we can have her move on and get on for a day, because I know she's busy. And if it's okay, we can do this?
Yeah, that's, I apologize. It was a last-minute change.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Kristen, you want to go ahead then?
Sure. The other one is a Section 3 action plan. You currently have one. This is an update. The federal government came out with new requirements, and they changed the rules quite a lot. And so we have updated the Section 3 action plans to reflect the new requirements. And this, Section 3 applies to only HUD funding.
Only HUD funding?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Have a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. Aye. So carry. Thank you. Kristen, have a good day.
Thank you very much. You too.
Okay. Then we'll jump back to Jenny, 6.7.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I guess this is now 6.8?
No, you're still 6.7, Jen.
Okay, 6.7 then. All right. This is a, the 2021 Fair Subrecipient Agreement in the amount of $70,000 for the Liberty House Program with YWCA, and that's with 2021 Fair Fund, so Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund.
Thank you. And this is with YWCA. Amber was just here this morning, Program Director, and this is a budget item. And Liberty House does some wonderful things in the area.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side. Aye. So carry. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
6.9 Eve Adrian, to vote on request for approval for municipal solid waste plan update.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. We are requesting approval to submit a two-year DEP grant to update our multi-county municipal solid waste plan. This is a mandatory 10-year plan update that serves like Humming, Columbia, Montour, Union, and Sanger Counties. And the purpose of the plan is to ensure that our waste management facilities have the capacity to manage our existing and our future residential and commercial waste and recycling. This DEP grant can provide 80% of the total project cost, and it does require 20% local match. The total project cost is $103,125, and we are requesting that DEP covers $82,500 of the total cost.
Okay, any questions or comments? Carry on, take out a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Fair side. Aye. Aye. So carry. Eve, I was at the Farmer's Barrel dinner last night, annual fall dinner, and they, when I noted that you were leaving the county, there was a, it was like taking the wind out of the room. They couldn't say enough good things about you. And Eve has gone on, taken another job elsewhere, a promotion really. For her, I'm happy for you. It is a great job for you, and I think the state stole us from you because of your record. And we're going to miss you dearly. Anything we can do for you in the future, let us know. The farmers are sad that you're going, but they know you'll be statewide advocating for us, and you're going to do great things. Your boss is three rows back from us right now. I mean, she's out, yes, she's got tears in her eyes. And so you've definitely made a huge impression for the short time you've been here. We thank you. We thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. That means a lot to me. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And thank you for the information you provided to me last night that I could share with the farmers.
Yeah, absolutely. And I wanted to reciprocate. If there's anything that you ever need from me, I would be happy to help.
Great, thank you. Best wishes to you and your family.
Thank you so much.
Likewise.
I echo his, what he said. You've been here a very short time, but you certainly did make a big splash, and you've done some really excellent work that you've presented to us. So we appreciate that very much. And I know we'll see you around the community here, and good luck to you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you again. That means a lot.
Take care.
Take care.
And last, 6.10 Wendy Hastings, voting on DOH EMS contract.
Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning, Commissioners. So just to give you a little bit of background about what brings me here today. So not this past June, but last June, you approved the Department of Health contract that allows us to administrate the EMS program for like Humming, Tioga, and Sullivan Counties. The contract was approved. It was signed by the Department of Health. And in August of last year, they came back and said, "We don't have enough money. We're cutting your budget by 11%," which was kind of about $26,000 to our budget last year. And that hurt. So this past June, we got our Department of Health contract, and you voted to approve the $2,205,126 contract. In August, they came back and said, "We're going to give you some more money this year." So they actually gave us $76,000 and some change. So they gave us the option of either revising the original contract that we did in June either revising the original contract that we did in June, or re-executing a whole new contract with the numbers where they're supposed to be. So, that's basically what I'm here today to ask your, um, approval to accept the two hun, what, the, the, the whole contract amount will be 281,997.36 cents.
Okay, it's a good thing.
It is. Um, the caveat of that is that thirty percent of our base budget this year will need to go to support rural EMS training. Um, so we're working on some strategies to do that.
Okay.
Please clarify. Are we changing the contract to the total amount? Or are we just...
No, we, we are re-executing a whole new contract, so that's why we're here today.
So you actually wound up with more money than was cut with the eleven percent?
Yes.
They took away twenty-six, you got seventy-six. So you have fifty thousand to dedicate, well, thirty percent of the entire budget has to be dedicated?
Yes.
That's, that's good that we're, they're focusing on training of rural EMS. I mean, it'll be a challenge, but that'll, that'll be good that you have resources to do it with.
I think the state recognized, uh, the crisis, uh, two years ago, and started to take action, you know, and it was well overdue.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments?
Yes, I, I have two comments. Um, I want to go back to the, the meeting that we had with, uh, the Army Corps and FEMA. And, uh...
Which was Friday.
Which was Friday, and, and I have to state this. After the meeting, um, I spoke with Esti Pinchess, and I, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, but she was the Colonel for the US Army, and Leon Skinner. And, uh, after the meeting, right at the college, I, I said, "I didn't hear anybody discuss about, about the sediment and about the brush and about the trees and the gravel bars." You know, that was not part of the conversation. And I asked them to pay attention to that when they, they went to visit the sites. And, um, I, I'm for one that says, you know, that the, the freeboard, that the height, the flooding that's happening right now is, I won't say it's because, uh, one hundred percent of those three things, but I'm, I'm telling you that we need to be able to get into those streams. We need to get into that river, and we need to clean it up. Montoursville, you're well aware of. I'm in the water restoration business. It, you know, it doesn't take as much water or rain to, to flood Montoursville anymore. And it's getting the same on the loyals, like Humming Creek as well. And when they went out to the site, uh, you know, they, they noticed it. Said, "We, we need to do something about this." And, um, she talked about, well, what agency, which was DEP. She said, "We need to get DEP in, and let's have a collaborative effort that all three departments, four departments, get on this. We need to be able to clean that up, because it is replacing a, a, a lot of water. The channel needs to be widened and, uh, deepened." I think they even talked about dredging. I, I'm not sure about that.
It's not dredging, it's sediment removal.
Oh, sediment removal. Right. Um, but that, that made me feel good and very optimistic that, that they came out to visit our site, which is important for these agencies to do. Uh, and then they can give us some recommendations. We, we felt very, very grateful that they came out, and we believe that they, they will take a, action. Uh, so Shannon, I asked you to stay because explain to the public that it's, it's a two-part system. It's not just the Army Corps and the dykes themselves, it's also with FEMA and the requirements of the freeboard.
Right.
So explain that.
Sure. Um, the, the levee systems that are in South Williamsport, Williamsport, and Loyal Sock Township, it, most of the parts of the levee that are dealing with the Army Corps are the mechanicals, the crosspipes, the maintenance of the levee itself, the maintenance of the pump stations, um, maintenance of the pumps, the electrical grids, um, the relief wells, things like that. That's what the Army Corps talks about and deals with when they're looking and doing their inspections and for their recertification process. But this other recertification process is also the height. And it's, it's not really the height so much as the capacity of the channel. And what you're talking about is, um, when the channel was initially built back in the fifties and, and forward, um, that channel was able to pass much more water. Um, and that is an operation, a maintenance thing, and, um, I think many people weren't aware that that's part of the process. So, as was explained to us, um, we need to work with DEP, FEMA, and the Army Corps to get approval to do the sediment removal, um, in those areas where the walls are, where the eye walls are, Memorial Avenue area on the other side, up closer to High Street, from, from basically, um, High Street down to the mouth of the like Humming Creek, that's where we need to go back in and restore them to what they were when they were built, because that may or may not have, uh, an impact on whether or not we have to actually raise the walls. Um, so, if, you know, and we're working with the city, um, to, to put in some, uh, letters of request for a risk assessment, you know, so that they can actually, the Army Corps can actually look at that and work with FEMA on a risk assessment to say, "Yes, this needs to be done. The walls need to be raised," or, uh, there is a potential that the removement of that sediment that has accumulated over the last fifty to seventy years, um, the removal of that sediment could be what we need to do. Um, so that's the two sides of the coin. It's not just the mechanics of the levee and the levee itself, it's also the height of the levee and whether or not, our levee is never overtop, knock on wood. Um, so we've been very fortunate for that. Um, but it has come close a couple of times. Um, so we need to make sure that, and then once that, once that sediment is removed, that it gets caught. And, you know, anytime we start seeing sediment being dropped and accumulating, that they, the, during regular operation maintenance, you go in, remove it, and, and it's always maintained then. So, going forward, we won't have that, that issue. We'll still have the analysis with regard to, you know, we have Wood looking at the design of the Memorial Avenue eye wall to a T-wall. So we would have that analysis if we need to sometime in the future raise it due to the way the freeboard is or the way that changing storms are happening. But at this point in time, maybe we won't have to raise it yet. And maybe that removal, removal of the sediment would give us the channel capacity that we need.
We were up there at the, uh, site on Memorial Avenue. We stood there, and, uh, the Colonel had talked, and she looked across, consulted the debris, and she says, "Why can't you move that debris?" Because it's gonna make the channel wider.
Well, it's gonna take it back to its, its original size.
Original size, yes, yes.
Yes.
And, and she was baffled. We told her about, you know, the state.
Yeah.
Uh, once you put the equipment in the water, you have the permits. You can do it on the side, but you can't do it in the water. And, and it's not just up like Humming Creek, it's, it's down to the Loyal Sock. I've talked to so many people that have debris in their streams, that, that if the debris wasn't there, the waters wouldn't come up as quick. They just want to clean the streams out, clean that debris out, so that the water would flow naturally. And, and this is the reason why we're having increased flooding. The Colonel agreed. Um, so this is another part of that saga that continues to plague the county, not just behind the levee, but this all flows into the Susquehanna.
Right.
So it's gonna affect the levee.
Right, and we need to, we need to hold, we need to get a meeting together with DEP to find out what are the requirements, what, um, what are the permits that we need. And it'll be different depending upon the creek, because, um, like Humming Creek is part of the levee system.
Right.
And there are certain things that, um, you know, we'll have to talk to DEP about, because that is actually a safety and, and flood prevention system. With the Muncie Creek, with the Loyal Sock Creek, and some of the other creeks, you know, basically, they're forming a delta where it comes into the Susquehanna. So we need to talk to them about, okay, where, because you're, it's not really dredging, because dredging doesn't really get you anywhere. Um, it just makes things run faster. But it is restoring something to what it was previously, and sometimes we call that legacy, you know, what the legacy was before all the development occurred. Because it's, in many cases, it's the development that causes the sediment to run down the stream. So what we need to do is find out what it would take, what the costs are, what are the permits needed to restore those areas to the legacy of the original area, so.
We expressed the concerns, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
We expressed the concerns of, uh, retro, the flood insurance, the price that those businesses are paying in flood insurance as high as $300,000. Um, these were all concerns we shared with the Army Corps, uh, that it's vital to our economic development and retainment, retainment around this county. And, uh, she was very impressed. She said that she goes to levee meetings across the northeast, and a lot of times people don't show up. Players that, that want act, uh, assistance don't even show up to the meetings. She was very impressed by everybody being at the table on Friday.
Yeah, they were very happy to see that all four municipalities are very involved and, and want to be involved and work together towards the maintenance of the three levee systems. And, and they even offered the, the fact that it would better suit us to go through the risk assessment. Whether or not we, we get what we want, it'll still be better for us to go to a risk assessment process than it will be to go through a full-blown feasibility study, which will take much longer and cost at least two or three times as much.
One partner that wasn't, one partner that wasn't there and will continue to invite him was FEMA.
Well, he, they...
And I don't know, I don't know why they weren't there?
They did not receive an invitation.
Okay, okay. Because the congressman had said, so we want them at the table too.
Yeah, our, our contact at FEMA, um, he's been very helpful. Tom Hughes is the State Hazard Mitigation Officer. Um, he wanted to attend, but he did not receive an invitation, and of course can't, you know...
There was a mix-up there.
It was Congressman Keller that put this together, correct?
Yeah, Congressman, and he had mentioned that the, he, so I'll express that to Congressman Keller, that they didn't receive your invite.
Well, I don't know if FEMA received an invite, but Tom Hughes, who wanted to attend, was not, it actually asked to attend, and so he couldn't.
So at the future meetings, we'll make sure he's there.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You know, just to follow up on that, um, again, this is an example, and I only put this out to try to educate the public. This is an example where the county legally does not have an obligation to the levee, right? It's like the bridges that we did with the bridge bundling. We don't have a legal obligation to put into, uh, plan, uh, put into effect a plan to fix them. But, uh, the last term, the three commissioners, this term, three commissioners have all been on board. And part of it is because we are trying to develop in the county a culture that says that the levee has to be protected. And I think, you know, not because any of, buddy came before us, didn't do their job, but there wasn't as much of a culture that the levee is something there that has to be protected for the next fifty years. Uh, what Commissioner Metzger said is, is very important, that, that we had, uh, they noted that we had all these people there. I mean, they were, they were really not only happy, but they were...
Surprised.
Surprised. We were thrilled that we had two federal agencies there, meaning Army Corps and FEMA, and we were able to put on the table the idea that we need those federal agencies to work together, so that we're not doing something to satisfy Army Corps and then paying over here to do something to satisfy FEMA, but that our dollars go to both places, uh, in the best way. Then the other thing that I just think that we have to have out there and start to have a conversation about, and I'm gonna try to repeat as often as possible, because it takes a while for issues to sometimes get across. I think everyone in the county needs to realize that everyone needs to make a contribution towards what we'll call resiliency protection. In other words, it isn't just money for the levee, it's money for, uh, the Muncie, Jersey Shore flooding, it's money for the creeks that my colleague, Mr. Masser, is, is, is active in, in the, in the Loyal Sock, is it the Loyal Sock you're referring to?
Like Humming Creek.
Like Humming Creek. Um, those water sheds. So, so I think that if we start, because at some point, we're gonna start to have a conversation about, okay, where do we get this money from? And some people who don't live next to the levee are gonna say, "Commissioners, why are, why are you Commissioner Ameriboot? I don't know how my colleagues feel, so I don't wanna..." But why are you suggesting that we should pay something when I live, you know, twenty-five miles from the levee? Because the point is that this levee is the life and blood of this county. As simple as that. And, and without the protection, and not only that, the funds could, if we did it correctly, the funds could be used for resiliency protection in Muncie, Jersey Shore, and those other water sheds. You know, we, we always get money from FEMA after the fact. But really, after the damage is done, it takes a hit on your economy, because you may get the money to clean up, but your economy is basically on standstill until that happens. So if we, if we can do resiliency protection, forward thinking, I think it would be great. So, that's, that's my thought on it, and I think we just have to continue to try to push that home.
Anything else?
Yeah, last night, uh, I presented to, uh, about a couple hundred citizens, uh, our voting system here in like Humming County. And I was shocked. I mean, there was an organization out there, uh, that said like Humming County was, uh, highly likely that there was fraud existed in our election process. So I, I took that pretty seriously. Um, uh, and it was amazing. I asked to show a hands, and, you know, almost everybody in the, in the audience raised their hand that they felt that there was fraud. And, um, I said, "I wanted to meet that major and have him here for debate," because that is absolutely incorrect." So I explained the whole process. And it, you know, it's long, I'm not gonna get into it all, but, uh, we had a gentleman here, uh, that came in yesterday, and he said, "You know, you, this is, this is a big lie here in like Humming County. We got a problem, and you guys aren't addressing it." Well, after the meeting, uh, he came up to me, and I said, "Well, you talk to Forrest." Forrest is the director. He's, he's the one that's the expert. Uh, so he came up to me after the meeting, and, and he said, "You know, uh, I apologize." He says, "I want you to tell Forrest Lehman that he is doing a fantastic job. He was armed with so much information just with recall, and, uh, I'm satisfied with his explanations. So, what's critical out there is, you know, you, you can get online and hear any information, okay? But don't repeat it until you verify it and that you validate it, because we do not need mistrust when it comes to one of our most important rights, and that's the right to vote."
So, so last night, I was with the, um, United Way and the Central Labor Council Northern Tier, and we're gonna hear more about this in the future, but it's really to begin a discussion about what's, what's referred to as ALICE families, asset limited, income-constrained employees. So basically, the working poor. In other words, people who work full-time forty, fifty, sixty hours a week, but can't make enough. We oftentimes have a lot of, uh, discussion about the people who aren't working at all, who are extremely poor, really, really poor. But, uh, there's an effort statewide to try to, uh, bring more attention to, uh, programs. For example, one of the things we discussed was the access to childcare and the ability of, uh, of people to be able to afford, um, childcare, uh, early learning for their, for their kids and the huge cost it's taking. The three of us have talked about it. So, I hope to bring them forward at some point, uh, between the United Way and these folks to, to, uh, to do, begin a discussion about this. But it was, it, you know, we've, we've talked about this often with the median household income here, and we know in, in Lairdsville, uh, we have so many challenges that we, that the community faces. And I know you were with the Farm Bureau.
I was at Strongborough Bureau last night, and the farmers, uh, fantastic dinner and meeting, um, a lot of good information shared. Um, one thing I would do want to share is last Saturday morning, I attended a breakfast at the Ginetti, and there was a representative from Lebanon County, Russ Diven was there speaking. And, uh, and this goes to, it's going on locally, and it's happening nationally, but it, it happens locally. Um, as he was speaking about different issues, he was speaking about critical race theory, he was speaking about mandatory vaccines, he was speaking about the election process, uh, there was a person in the hallway, started yelling at him, heckling him from the hallway. This person had nothing to do with the meeting. Um, there was a, a charge for the breakfast. They were welcome to come in and pay for the, pay for their breakfast and join the meeting. They didn't want to do that. They wanted to heckle the congressman from the hallway and, um, just walking by. And, uh, and this is the problem what's, what's going on. We can't have civil conversations. We can't have civil conversations without harassing people, following people in the bathrooms, um, following people while they're, they're in their private lives and harassing them. Uh, this isn't the way to get things done. It doesn't do good. We need to have conversations and if people disagree with you, that's okay. Um, you're not gonna get everything your own way. So we have to move on, expect the decisions, um, try to work together. Um, you know, this is going on in school boards across the nation. Um, you know, just to, and, and people have the right to be upset about things, especially with their kids, you know? Um, the schools and administrations do not own our children. Parents own their children. They raise their children and they have to be respected. Um, and I think you see this frustration going on now because, um, they don't feel like they're being heard. I don't think people feel like they're being heard. Uh, there's ways of being heard. Screaming from a hallway, following people in the bathrooms is not the way to be heard. And, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're open anytime for any kind of a discussion of any kind. I often said next door, you could walk in my office, you could cry, you could yell, you could do anything, but don't, don't use curse language and I'll be glad to listen to you. Um, and I, I appreciate people's passion and people's emotions, um, especially when it comes to very important topics such as their children. But we have to, we have to respect each other and yelling from a hallway and heckling people is not the way to do it, not the way to get things done.
And since Mr. Grouseley's here from the paper, I'd ask you to do us a favor. We're getting phone calls, there are jobs, they're, they're gonna lose their jobs. They're not getting vaccinated. It's, it's a, uh, whether it's from the private or public sector, put, put a survey out there. Ask people what they feel about jobs, that if you're not vaccinated, do you feel that people should be losing their jobs? Being fired, being terminated, that's what's happening right here in Lycumming County. They have until, uh, October 28th. There are different dates because there are different companies. Um, we're walking down a path, a slippery slope and, you know, I don't think it's anybody's damn business what, what goes into your body, okay? And especially a vaccine that was rushed and we're not, listen, I wouldn't be saying this if I wasn't hearing it from doctors, if I wasn't hearing it from nurses that are not going to get it and lose their jobs, okay? This is pretty sensitive, but this is also America. Wow, maybe, who knows?
We, uh, we have a president that last summer stated numerous times, numerous times, at least two dozen times, it's on tape, I will not mandate, I will not mandate, I will not mandate a vaccine. And he's doing so. And we're losing institutional knowledge, we're losing, people that were heroes last year are now gonna be zeros. And it's adding to the unemployment, we're losing the expertise, law enforcement, military and, and the hospital system, it's just gonna make things 10 times worse, if not 100 times worse. Um, again, we'll encourage people to get vaccines, but to, and there, there, I've talked to people that are in favor of the vaccines, but they're not getting the vaccines because their government's telling them they have to get it. And that's, that's their, their point of view. And, and they said, if government wants to tell me I had to do this, I might think about doing it. Because I think they do do good, and that's people in the medical field.
But they're slipping in the back door. Listen, these contracts and these employees that are said that they had to be vaccinated, it's from the federal government calling those companies up and saying, you will not get our government contracts if you don't vaccine every one of your people. This is not the role of the federal government. I don't care how serious people think this is, this is ridiculous and it needs to end.
And what's right around the corner, because it's going on in California, we know things go from the west to the east, is mandatory vaccines for all children. And when that hits the schools, if they don't think parents are upset now, it's gonna be even worse. And then that's a whole nother topic. And, uh, God bless the school boards how they deal with that. Because there are gonna be states that are gonna say, you're gonna have mandatory vaccines for these kids to come to school. And the kids as, as young as kindergarten, and that should be a parent's choice, parent's choice, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, 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 I was gonna say, there was an article that I was gonna bring down to talk about today, but I, I thought we, uh, about, about the history of, uh, vaccine mandates in the United States. It was in the Wall Street Journal and it was interesting, uh, from a historical perspective, George Washington, uh, made the troops get, uh, vaccinated because, um, and as he put it, he said, um, not having them vaccinated, uh, is, is more dangerous than the, than the enemy. Um, then of course there was, I think in, uh, 18, 1875 and then 1943, World War II. I mean, hopefully we can encourage people out there to get vaccinated. I, I, I met a constituent whose son has a very serious, uh, health condition and they cannot have anyone, uh, they can't risk bringing home, they have to visit him at the hospital and they can't risk bringing to him in the hospital something that they don't know they have, right? In other words, that even if they get, they, they're vaccinated, even if they get vaccinated, they may still carry the virus. So it just would help if people could look towards getting vaccinated and, I mean, obviously if you have a religious, um, uh, uh, reason for not doing it, um, that, that's your religious belief, although I think most, from what I've read, most of the major churches, that doesn't mean that the minor church is not important, but most of the major churches have said that there is no religious basis, uh, for being opposed to getting the vaccine. Um, the, the Catholic Church has, uh, has said that, the Protestant sects have said that. Um, I don't know about the, the, uh, uh, Muslim and the other sect, uh, Jewish, I, I haven't read anything contrary to it. So I think that if we just could look towards it as a way of building community, you, you would do something to keep your family safe and then, um, do something to keep them, you know, we said, we, we, we talked about the domestic violence awareness month tonight. And I mean, all of the things we do to try to keep the community safe and strong are things that sometimes, um, infringe on people's, uh, personal lives. And, and part of that is we, we have to give a little, um, you know, there was a time and this, I, I don't say this tongue in cheek, but there was a time when, when a man said, hey, I have a right to beat my wife. My wife's my property. And, uh, and I, I don't even mean back in the 1850s, I, I mean even, uh, even, even more recently than that. So I think if we can try to find a way to say, hey, what we're doing is for the community good, um.
It is, and we'll continue to encourage it, but as polio vaccinations and in polio, as smallpox, that vaccination and in smallpox, as those vaccinations, you can still get this vaccine and still acquire COVID. And to get booster shots three months later, this is what's confusing the public. And we'll continue to encourage the people to get vaccines, but to make it mandatory to where people are losing their jobs is wrong, especially by a president that promised to last summer that he would not do so.
Those who give up a little bit of freedom for a little bit of safety deserve neither. We, we, we're watching our constitution under attack, right and left, every day. It's, it's incredible. And it's incredible that people just aren't paying attention to it.
Well, please respect each other and, um, and shouting down people, heckling people is not gonna solve anything. So during this meeting today, that we complete the agenda and we ask, um, everybody to have a good week and we'll see you next week, October 19th at 10:00. Yes, I'm sorry, we have a public comment?
There's a comment.
Yes.
Zach Nua. Um, I understand about being concerned about business costs for flood insurance, but it's just as tough on the people of the county paying flood insurance on properties they've never flooded. Um, and property improvement are almost impossible. 17,000 for building, over 20,000 in engineering and legal fees alone.
Zach's, he's exactly right. This is gonna continue to affect more people, um, as they draw up new maps.
In time.
In time, the people are gonna have to pay flood insurance if they're near a flood zone. And that, that's been talked about and when that hits, um, you know, just the engineering cost alone, it is devastating to a homeowner.
Good comment.
Yes, very good comment, Zach. Thank you.
That's why it's critical that we get the accreditation.
Absolutely, yeah. So thank you for that comment. Uh, any other public comments from the audience? Okay, Richard, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. I gotta write some media. I'll, I'll be, I gotta call the phone.
So.
I have to get down.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
Hi.
Hey, you are?
I like.
Hey, so.
Check this out, I'm sitting there.
I'm sitting there and thinking, hey.
Okay. Uh, well, all, all, all of that.
I'm sitting at all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't start you there.
I know, that was funny.
She, she looked at me laughing.